His time is precious like.
It's 5:30 and we'll go ahead and get this special joint meeting for council for Tuesday, May 13 of 2025. Mari, could we do roll call?
I'll start with roll call for city council. Mayor, Mayor Alvaro Areola.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem James Terus, Councilman JP Sanchez, Councilwoman Ernestina Martinez, Councilwoman Jesus Lopez Jr., Councilman Randy Quinones, Councilwoman Carmen Gutierrez. Mayor, there is a quorum for the city council. I'll do roll call for EDC. Mr. Kenneth Smith, Mr. Sergio Diaz, Mr. Santiago Rodriguez, Mr. Richard D. Robles, Mr. Eddie Frank Sanchez, Mr. Raúl Barksdale. There is no quorum for the EDC, but we may proceed with the city council.
Okay. At this time, can we stand for the pledge allegiance and pledge allegiance to the Texas flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the EDC, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We are on item four, citizens' comments. They're non-signed up. Item five is other business. 5A is tax increment reinvestment zone presentation by David Pettit of Pettit Ayala Consulting.
David, could you step up to the podium, please?
It's a pleasure to be here. My name is David Pettit with my partner Natalie Ayala. And we would like to walk through with you the workings of a tax increment reinvestment zone. We've been doing this a long time and so we do a lot of these workshops and so we're here to educate. And so at any point during the presentation, if you have a question, do not hesitate just to say, "Hey, I don't know. I have a question," and we will try to address it or have a follow-up with you. We've been doing this, I've been doing this for 30 years and Natalie's been doing it for quite a long time as well. And so I think that, you know, there's no stupid questions, so only stupid answers, right? So with no further ado, I'm going to have Natalie start us off and then I'm going to kind of end up the presentation. Then we'll do a little bit of a tag team on answering some of your questions. Thank you all so much for having us.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us. As David mentioned, my name is Natalie Ayala and we're here from Fort Worth. We just drove in and thank you so much for having us in your beautiful town. And just to give you an overview as to what we're going to be speaking about, we'll give you a quick overview over our company. We want to discuss tax increment financing as a concept and then we're going to discuss some specific case studies, so showing them in action, and then we'll leave some time for questions. So what do we do? As I mentioned, we're office out of Fort Worth. We assist real estate developers and public entities, typically cities and counties, facilitate new development and redevelopment through collaborative public-private partnerships. So what is a public-private partnership? It's a contractual agreement between a public agency and a private sector entity. So we really try to bridge the gap between the private sector and the public sector, helping to ensure that development can move forward and not to be cliche, but try to get it to be a win-win situation for everyone. What side do you work for? We've done work for both sides, which we think gives us a unique perspective as to what is needed to make the project a success for both the developer and the community. Some sample public entity clients, we only do work in the state of Texas. So you'll see cities throughout the state here listed, El Paso, Grand Prairie, Colleyville, Trophy Club, Kerrville, Tyler. That's just a listing of an example. And then we also have developer clients that we choose to partner with developers that we know can move the project forward, that have the background. So we never try to represent somebody that we think is just a pie in the sky. This is their first development. They just have some ideas. Typically, we partner with proven developers such as Heinz, Centurion American, Majestic Realty, and you can see the rest listed there. Why would you enter into a public-private partnership? These are the three main reasons that we kind of put into these buckets. Infrastructure improvements, we call this the low-hanging fruit. It's the use of economic development tools in conjunction with planning to foster redevelopment. So we're typically focusing on infrastructure needs. So whenever I'm speaking to the development community and they ask me, you know, "Why would we ever need to hire you?", I say, "Whenever your civil engineer comes back to you with an opinion of probable cost on the public improvements and they've killed the deal because the road, the water, the sewer, one of those type of public infrastructure needs has come in way higher than you anticipated, then that's a good time for us to approach the community in which you're looking to build and say, 'We'd really love to move this project forward, but there's extraordinary infrastructure needs and we'd like your participation to help kind of bridge that gap and make that a little bit less of a burden on the project so that we can move the project forward.'" Business creation and retention, this is the use of economic development tools to encourage the relocation or retention of targeted businesses. So oftentimes, a community might have specific industries that they're really looking to target for their community because it's a good match for your development that you have in place or that you'd like to see in place and also your labor force. So if there's a type of business that you're looking to attract, then it would be an appropriate time to enter into a public-private partnership so that you can get that type of business in your community. And then gap financing, this is the use of economic development tools to facilitate a fair rate of return for private investment that would otherwise not occur. And the best example I can think of when I see this is oftentimes we might see in some type of community that there might not be a proven market for a specific type of retail. We saw this in Stephenville, which is outside of Fort Worth and close to Tarleton University. They had a big need for additional retail. They wanted the big retailers, but the big retailers would not come if there was no Class A retail development. No developer wanted to build Class A retail development in Stephenville because they didn't know that they could get the market rates that would make that type of development financially feasible, if that makes sense. So if you can't get the rate of return that you need to make back your construction costs. And so the gap financing was part of the reason that the city of Stephenville started a tax increment reinvestment zone to be able to get not only a targeted business, they wanted more retail, but then also to close that financial gap that the developer was having trouble with.
And Natalie, I want to mention the road that went along with that that they were required to build for the.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're a tag team, so forgive me, but I get excited about this stuff. The city also needed to expand Harbin Road for Tarleton, but they didn't have the money to do that. And so by incentivizing this project, that project produced enough increment in new sales that they were otherwise losing to Brownwood or Granberry, that they could go ahead and finance that. So the incentive for that infrastructure was about $4 million, but then we were able to add $10 million to that revenue stream and bond it and complete that road, all on the backs of that one project, and it paid for itself. So that was the but for that project, we wouldn't have been able to expand that necessary road. Plus their sales tax, I believe went from $2 million to $12 million over the past three years. So it's a real return on investment to the city.
Thank you, David. All right, so we're going to get into the main topic here, which is tax increment financing. Tax increment financing, TIF, is a tool that incentivizes economic development within a tax increment reinvestment zone. So again, as I mentioned, we work throughout the state. Throughout the state, you'll hear people say TIF or TIRS kind of interchangeably. Proper, the proper way to do it is tax increment financing is the adjective and then, or sorry, the verb, and the tax increment reinvestment zone is the noun. So if you're speaking to the district itself, it's more proper to call it a TIRS. Nobody's going to come and correct you. It's not a big deal. It's governed by Texas Tax Code, Chapter 311, so there are specific rules and ways in which you can use the tool. There's hundreds of TIRSs that have been created in the state of Texas. Cities alone are in partnership with other taxing units, and we can speak a little bit more about that as we get along in the presentation. But typically, the first taxing entity that you'll go to to partner with you will be the county. But we've seen the hospital district and other communities, even the junior college. And that's not necessarily, they're not obligated to participate, but there's specific types of situations where that might be appropriate to approach them. A TIRS can pay for infrastructure, public improvements, economic development programs, or other projects benefiting the zone, and we'll give you more examples of what those are later. So this is a really great slide because I just said a lot of words. What did I even say? So this is a visual. It's light. It's really warm. But if everyone can focus on this slide, I think you'll at least grasp the concept of what we're discussing. So it's not a new tax on development. That's one of the main takeaways that I hope you get from this, is that a TIF is not an additional tax. What it does is it redirects a portion of the increment into a special fund to pay for improvements within the boundaries of the zone. So once you create a TIRS, that establishes your base year. So if you were to create a TIRS hypothetically in 2025, then the value in which you're measuring increment against is the value of the property within the zone as of January 1st, 2025. So you can see there on the left-hand side, it says the zone designated base year, and then the horizontal gray rectangle there represents the tax revenue that the city is getting from the properties as of January 1st, 2025. So whatever you were receiving before the zone was created will continue to flow to the general fund. So it's not a loss. You're not taking a hit to the general fund. What you are doing is you're foregoing a portion of the incremental tax revenue above and beyond that base that will be redirected into a special fund to pay for improvements in the zone. So for every new dollar, a portion of that new dollar will go into the fund to fund improvements within the zone, and the other portion will then go to the general fund. So if you were going to split that new dollar, $1.50, you had a dollar going before, $1.50 would go to the general fund and 50 cents would go to the TIF. I just said a lot of things. Let's look at the numbers of how that would look. So we had words, we had pictures. Now we have, for the numbers people, we have numbers. We're really trying to help you understand what, how this tool works. So the current year property tax value, let's say it's $300,000. So again, in my example that I gave, I said if we had created it in 2025, let's just say for the purposes of this example, that the current year is 2026, so the next year. So the next year, it's $300,000. The base year, 2025, was $200,000. So you have $100,000 worth of increment. So you can see in this chart here, we went ahead and put in the city of Del Rio's tax rates. If you had $100,000 worth of TIF increment property value, then based on your current tax rate, if you participated in the TIF at 75%, that means in that little chart where we showed a portion of it going to the general fund and a portion of it going to the TIF fund, if that portion that goes into the TIF fund was 75%, then the TIF revenue would be $523 based on that $100,000 worth of incremental value. So again, you're not putting any money into the TIF fund based on what you had previously gotten. It's only based on increment, so it's new future dollars. And then you can see here, we're not making any assumptions about other taxing entities participating. One thing to note here that we do kind of get questions about is, you know, what is the participation rate for the city? Here we have it as an example, 75%. It's up to what you decide. So it could be 50%, it could be 100%. It can vary over the term of the TIRS. If you were to approach the county about participating, they do not have to match your participation. It can be whatever they decide. So if you are going in at 75%, the county could come in at 50%. All of that is subject to negotiation. There's a lot of flexibility and ability for you to make it work for your needs. There's two ways to create that new increment. So in that example, we went up from 200 to 300, and so we produced that $100,000 worth of new taxable value. Where does that come from? There's two ways. So there's the new construction or new investment. So if something were to be built, obviously, that would be above and beyond the base year because it wasn't included in that base year value. Or there's just the annual appreciation of real property. Obviously, that's a much slower method to generate increment. That's going to be, you know, 3%, 5%, whatever it might be that your tax rolls are growing year over year.
Council, have any questions? Hold on. Our attorney might have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
When you talk about the participation rate and negotiating, what are you negotiating with the county? For example, the county?
Let me establish, so there's a, only right now in the state of Texas can cities create TIFs. There was a legislative change that allowed counties to do it, but there's a lawsuit and so the governor could never sign it. So only you can originate it. So you create the boundary, the term, your participation in the project and financing plan. You can enter into an interlocal agreement with the, all the taxing jurisdictions, and it can be 100% or it can be nothing. And so typically, it's, we're looking at but for your participation, we wouldn't be seeing this revenue. So that's where we say it's, we like to go in and say, "Would you match us?" I think in a lot of our cities.
But what are they matching? What are they giving?
Their participation rate. So if we go back to that example that we had previously, so if we're at 75%, and this was 100% an assumption, it could be 50%, okay? And Natalie's going to hear me start saying all my sayings here. If you're working on a development that's not going to occur, 50% of something's better than 100% of nothing. Because, you know, you got a dollar. 50 cents is going into the TIF fund. 50 cents is going into the general fund. The same argument can be made with the county and some of the other taxing jurisdictions. The ISD gets a little tricky because they're under a Robin Hood. So any dollar that goes into the TIF counts towards their student allocation. So they're more or less since 1999 effectively cut out. But it's essentially, you're saying, "Does the county make revenue from this TIF?", which they would here. "Are they able to participate in projects that would benefit them?" The alternative is, no project goes forward and there's no revenue. That $480 is just theoretical. So when you go in in those negotiations, typically, they want to look at the low-hanging fruit, roads, water, sewer, drainage, those things that can help the overall infrastructure of the city. And then they don't have to provide the police and fire because it's in the city, right? And so a lot of times, you can do TIFs in the city and also in the ETJ. So we'll bring properties into the ETJ that the city's getting new property value, but the county's not having to provide those services. They're not having to provide that police and fire. So it's truly a negotiation. It's an interlocal. It's a partnership between the two. And so we're waiting right now on a couple of different TIFs. And sometimes they can take a while. They can take, you know, three to six months to make sure that your other partners are on board with where the TIF plan is and how those dollars are going to be spent, and that's why the project and financing plan is very important. We try to address, you know, the most important needs of the community and then also the needs to actually make vertical development occur, which I was mentioning is this slide is my favorite slide because there really are only two ways to generate taxes. There's only new construction or your organic growth. So we know that we have our taxable value of your homes and they go up every year. Mine does. And the state has put a cap on that to 10%, as you know. But, so that's your organic growth, or you have new construction. Those are the only two ways to make increment. I'll turn it to Natalie.
Sorry, just to answer your questions briefly, the county, what we would be negotiating is their percentage of that $480 that they would be willing to put into the TIF fund and for how long.
But the county doesn't have to participate necessarily.
They don't have to participate, and once again, these are numbers that are projections. So, you know, as part of the discussion we'd have with county is, if we don't get your participation, we don't have enough money to fund the project. Therefore, if the project doesn't happen, so that's a zero. So it's new revenue. As we go back to our chart, you're going to always stay at that gray line. So what we're talking about, this isn't a new tax. It's increasing revenue, ad valorem taxes through that new construction, not just. You can sometimes put a TIF around an established area and just look on the growth that's occurring there. But the primary focus of TIFs, in our opinion, are to encourage new investment and new infrastructure. And so that's why we kind of look at, with this approach, is looking at the new construction or investment, not just the annual appreciation.
Now, new construction doesn't just meet commercial. It's also residential.
Correct.
Apartments.
Anything that would be on the tax rolls, any taxable. Now, universities, tax-exempt entities don't do anything for the TIF because they're not taxable. So, but I think we lead into a couple of good questions. Why create a TIRS? Private development activity is expected to occur within a designated area. Benefits a large area rather than being project-specific. So provides funding source without impacting the current amount of general fund revenues for the participating entities. They're always getting that bottom line, that gray line, if we go back to the chart. Attracts potential investors into the area that may not otherwise occur. Incentivizes developers to increase the quality of a development. This is a lot of times what we see. And brings speed to market versus what would occur without the TIF. So what we get a lot of times is, would this development occur without us putting in this investment? Well, what we typically have is the developer put in the public infrastructure and they're just getting repaid, so it's performance-based. If they don't produce the taxes, they don't get paid back. And so it's essentially establishing a fund to where they're paying their taxes and they're just getting paid back for the infrastructure that they put in place. And I know I tell this example a lot and Natalie gets tired, but in Fort Worth, they have a very successful downtown TIF. And the Bass family wanted to reinvest in downtown and they had about $311 million worth of taxable value. They were going to invest about $1 billion and they asked the city, "When's the last time you spent public money downtown?" They said, and this is in the early 90s, "It's in 1972." They said, "Well, where's all my money gone?" And it was going up north to field Alliance, fuel Alliance's development and down to the south. They said, "Well, how can I make an investment in downtown and know that my money's going to stay downtown?" And a TIF was the way that they did that. And so I know if I'm making this investment, that the streets are going to benefit around me. That's the simplest example I know of, to explain to somebody how a TIF works. It's, they're still taxed dollars. They're just being put into a special fund that's spent on a special area that meets the criteria of the law. And we do believe, just with that, like that downtown example, it demonstrates a commitment to creating a sense of place and identity. So the city is behind this development and wants to see it happen. That's one of the primary reasons.
I hope not jumping, but how long is this investment? How many years are we looking at as far as?
So it depends if you have a bird in hand or, you know, you're kind of planning. Typically, if we have a development in hand, it's just, you know, how much the participation? Because we have three things that we can kind of play with. One is the term, you know, how long, the participation, and then the amount. You know, how much are we trying to fund? So it's a combination of those things. But I think in general, for a long, you know, significant investment, minimum of 20 years, sometimes up to 30 years, we're looking at the payback because you're looking at, instead of you making the investment, the developer's making the investment, and so they need that time. Now, you can shorten that. Let's say you did a 50-50 participation. So for every new dollar, 50 cents goes into the general fund, 50 cents goes into the TIF fund, but it takes them 20 years. You can shorten that by going to 100%, but there'd be no money going to the general fund. So it's a careful balancing act, and what we like to do is a matrix that shows, "Here's what 100% will do, and here's the term. Here's what 75% would do. Here's what 50% would do." Because we're all talking about new revenues to the city. So Natalie, am I correct in saying that 20 to 30 years is kind of the, the main wheelhouse? Yes.
Could you give an example of payoff by a developer and then how the increment is then used for the rest of the years for infrastructure?
Yeah, and that's, you led me right to a point that I was going to make. So I think there's an important distinction between the term of the TIF and the term of any specific development agreement entered into within the TIF. And so if you have a 30-year TIF, you could have, you know, 20, 30 development agreements within that term that might have 10-year spans. So for example, Shawna, if you have a developer that comes in in year six, completes the development commitments that they've made to enter into a development agreement, and then in year seven, that might be their year one, and you might have a 10-year term that they're getting back, paid back a portion of the increment that they have developed. Now that investment is in place, the taxable value has increased. When that rolls off in year 17, then all of that increment just rolls into the TIF fund that you can then spend to incentivize other projects or even city-initiated special projects. And so that's oftentimes what we see is that if a TIF is very successful on the front end, then you'll start to develop this fund balance. And then you can start to look around within the boundaries of the TIF and say, "Are there any public improvements that we would like to be seeing?" We saw this very, a great example of this in Fort Worth in their Southside TIF, in their medical district just south of downtown. As projects came to fruition and started to develop, then the city had quite a bit of money and they did like a complete streets project that was funded by money generated within the TIF. And so there's a lot of ways that you can kind of build up a fund within the TIF by shortening either the development agreements or even offering them a lower participation rate than the TIF is putting in. So there's, is that kind of what you were referring to, Shawna?
What I'm saying is, if we're collecting 11, let's say 11,000 on a property and somebody else comes in and develops and puts new homes or whatever into it, we'll still collect the 11,000. Anything over that will go to the developers.
Well, it's all negotiated, so whatever the participation would be, let's just say a 50-50 partnership, what is what is in the TIF is the participation rate. 50 cents above the $11,000 would go into the TIF fund and 50 cents would go to the general fund. Now, it's a development agreement within the TIF that pays back the developer what you feel is appropriate. So if you feel that, we've done some analysis that there was an additional $3 to $4 million worth of drainage, infrastructure, sanitary sewer, roads, we're going to pay them back for that. They fronted that. It's going to be in the public right away. We're going to use that 50 cents that's going into that fund and then we're going to pay them off. Now, once you're paid off, you're getting more revenue into the TIF fund and you can do other projects, and you can pay back some of the city initiatives that you had earlier. So that's the key. It's the participation. And so you don't always have to have it with the developer, but the developer is kind of key. You can put in a TIF and hope the developer doesn't ask for any money, but typically, there's, it's a chicken or egg kind of dilemma that you're in because the developer's not going to go unless you kind of put in the TIF. So it's a careful balance between the two.
And it's specifically public goods that can be refunded or funded or repaid back?
For 99% of the cases, yes, you can only pay for public improvements. So those things that are in the public right away. So when a developer comes in, I think Natalie, you know, appropriately put it, when you're a developer and you're putting together a project and then they go, "Okay, well, civil engineering, we've got an opinion of probable cost. I need $6 million worth of sanitary sewer. How am I going to do that?" This doesn't pencil. I can't charge $100 a foot for my rents. But if they had a TIF and we could show on a program from what they're paying in taxes that we can pay you back over a 10-year period, it might be worth their while to make that investment. Because, you know, death and taxes are about the only thing we know for certain are going to be there, right? And so I don't think the state's going to go away from, you know, ad valorem taxes. And it's been a successful tool that's been here for, you know, since the early 90s and really late 80s. And so TIFs all across the state have been using this mechanism.
Now, can a developer do, let's say, they have 25 acres, and they only want to develop 15 acres at the beginning, and then the additional as they're growing, can they do that, or?
Absolutely. So, they, that would be a, we would most likely structure that in a two-phased approach. One is to fund their initial infrastructure, and then you could have a phase two as a part of the agreement. We would probably ask that they come back at a separate time and ask again. And so, there's two approval processes that go through a TIF. There's one from the TIF board, which makes a recommendation to the city council. So, as a client of mine likes to say, there's two mother may-eyes. Mother may I, the developer comes up to the TIF board, can I get reimbursed $3 million for this public infrastructure? And here's my, here's how I'm going to pay you back, is through the taxes I'm generating. And then the city council has to bless that. And so, yes, you can do that in multiple ways. You can put it in the original agreement. We would probably recommend doing it as a separate request, because you don't know what you don't know. Markets can change. And so, you could have, Natalie and I have worked on a lot of projects from the private sector, and they want to get as much as they can in that first bite of the apple. But they can't control, you know, we want to know what they're building in phase two and phase three, the market dictates that. So, let us approach your problem with phase one. And then, at a subsequent date, you can come back and ask for additional. And if it's not funded, potentially, the project doesn't go forward. But that's always at the discretion of the TIF board and the city council.
And the city council can be the TIF board?
Correct.
Oh, we don't have to establish another board, or?
No. So, we highly recommend, in a lot of our cases, unless there's some other mitigating circumstances, that the TIF board is the city council, because it's like a P and Z. You, you're elected, you know best. You know, and so, to have another board, sometimes we find them at odds about what they can do. So, we'd much rather go to the source and say, council, do you feel that this is a good investment? And what we like to do on this is say, okay, here's the total taxes, here's what's being contributed, here's the net benefit. If there's not a net benefit, there's not a reason to do it. And so, there's always going to be a net benefit from the sales tax, business, personal, and real property taxes that are generated. And we like to show that, and then show what's a reasonable time to pay back the developer for their investment. Because a lot of times, there's just areas that aren't prone to, you know, all the good areas have been taken, if you will. The easy layups, you know, because they have the infrastructure and all the stubouts, and so, they can build. But when you add additional infrastructure costs, that's when projects start getting pushed. And then when you, you know, can't provide roads, water, sewer, drainage, those type of things, even those are enterprise funds, as Shawna knows, those are maxed out, particularly in today's market and today's environment. So, really, you're partnering with the private sector, that they put that, but they're at risk, because if they don't go vertical and pay taxes, they don't get paid back.
Let me ask you, what would happen if everything flops? The developer doesn't develop anything, they start off, and then they leave it there and move on to something else?
No harm, no foul. So, basically, you have what you had before.
And the city's not liable for it?
You just have a ordinance in place that has that as a TIF, and if there was increment that was occurring in there. But what we like to do in the development agreements is have benchmarks, that the developer has to pull a building permit within a certain amount of time, and get a certificate of occupancy within a certain amount of time. So, they're just not on the books for eternity, if you will, just eating up time, so you can move on to the next deal.
Does the EDC have any questions? Shrobelis?
I want to kind of put it in a percentage. I'd say about 50% of the TIFs. Some counties just will not, because there's friction between the two. But surprisingly, sometimes there's a change in county administration, county election, and we get 100% participation from all taxing jurisdictions, because it's so important. Housing is real important in a lot of communities, particularly along the coast here. And so, they're not able to get the housing, so all the taxing jurisdictions, they put out surveys, and they go, what's the number one priority we have? And it's housing. So, they're all willing to put their money where their mouth is and say, okay, we're not getting anything now. We have jobs, we don't have places where these people can live, so we need to create affordable places for these people to live. And I'm totally happy paying a developer back for putting in roads, water, sewer, drainage, that are going to be owned by the city. So, and a lot of times, that story translates to the county and to the other taxing jurisdictions. I'll go on to the next slide. We have just a couple more, but these are all good questions, and thank you all very much for keeping this interactive rather than us just sitting here spewing out words, as Natalie was saying. This is another thing that was, that was brought up. Can the city change the boundaries of a TIF? Yes, but only if the boundary change continued to meet the restrictions of the creation of the TERs, which is, you can't have more than 50%, now, a city your size, more than 50% of your taxable value in a TIF, and you can't have more than 30% of the value, not the area, but the value, which is four residential homes, is defined as four residential homes, cannot be more than 30% of the TIF. We do a lot of TIFs that are 100% single-family development. It doesn't matter what the vacant use is and what the planned use is, it's what the use currently is at the time of creation. What's created in the future doesn't have to be a part of that requirement. And so, let's say you have a TIF, and we have a proposal that I have to send out tonight when I get back to the hotel. The city, very successful TIF, they want to keep it going, but they want to spend, they've built up this money, but they want to spend it somewhere else. So, we can amend that TIF and change the boundary, and change the term, and basically spend the money there. And so, basically, you have this ability to amend it. Prior to 2005, we didn't have that ability. You couldn't change the boundaries, and you couldn't change the term. These are always legislative actions that you have the ability to do so, as long as you meet those statutory requirements. Another key important component, can TERs be terminated? A city that created a TERs can terminate by approving an ordinance that designated the creation ordinance, given it occurs when all project costs, tax increment bonds, interest on bonds, or any obligations have been paid in full. So, if you have a TIF that's not doing anything, you can, you can just close it. If you have one that just has some small payments, you pay those off, you can terminate it. So, at any time when you don't have those obligations in place, and also, when you don't have the revenue, we do that quite a bit, because sometimes developers go away, markets change. I've worked on a lot of big, grandiose, mixed-use projects in large cities, whether it be El Paso, or Irving, or Dallas, or Fort Worth, or San Antonio, and the developer just couldn't get his act together. But the TIF was there, ready, if they were, and we just had to abolish the TIF. The city did its part, the developer just needed to do their part, because it's a true partnership. So, you can terminate a TIF. I think this is a, a good graphic that kind of just shows how a TIF flows. You have the TERs that's created, you have the TERs plan approved, so you have a creation ordinance. Then, as Natalie had mentioned, you have a development agreement typically with the developer or the city. Let's say the city wanted to fund a road, water, sewer, but get reimbursed from the TIF, because it had county and other taxing jurisdictions putting money into that. It can be in a development agreement with the city, it can be a development agreement with the developer. So, you have these agreements, a development agreement, not developer agreement, but a development agreement. And those are approved by the TIF board and city council. Your project costs are incurred, the project is completed, then you have tax increment generated, and then the developer, you can also substitute city, is reimbursed. So, that's really kind of the simplicity of it. And there's a lot of details, and every time somebody talks about TIFs, TERs, well, use whatever you want to, but it's really about those two things, new construction or incremental growth. We put together a couple of case studies, and then I think we'll take some questions from you guys, because I'm sure you have quite a few questions. But TIFs are all over. They vary widely throughout the state. You have cities like Allen, small cities like Bridgeport, Crandall. We'll give you an example about Elgin, Kaufman, Liberty. Last I looked through the comptroller's office, there was about 487 active TIFs within the state of Texas. That's what, that are reported. I know there's a lot of them that are created, and they don't do the best job of reporting to the comptroller's office. But you can see, they're used, a lot of these people are our clients, Wilmer. We were, we were doing, we just got engaged to do a TIF in La Grange, Texas. And Natalie's so young, she didn't know that was a song by ZZ Top, by the way. So, just a little jab at my younger colleague here. But anyway, they see the benefit of having a TIF. We're doing a TIF in Van Alstine, which is north of Salina. Salina is the fastest-growing city in the, one of the fastest-growing cities in the United States, and it's in Collin County, just north of Plano, McKinnon. And I think they're their 20th TIF. It's, it's just incredible, the amount, and you'll see in one of our case studies, what they've been able to do with TIFs because of that but for. But for the developer putting in that and being able to be repaid by the increase in taxes, can the city really grow? So, the purpose of this is just to show that all cities use this, this mechanism. You're not alone, and you're right in. There's no city too big or too small that has used a TIF. So, the city of Elgin approved a $10 million bonds for water, wastewater, and street improvements. And this just has a quote from the city meander, saying, I wouldn't encourage you to just go out there and create a TIF and then float some bonds without having some darn good evidence that you're going to have some development, okay? That's where you can kind of get into some trouble. And I've had, I like to say, we're like the farmer's commercial. We know a thing or two because we've seen a thing or two. I've had some TIFs go sideways. And if you don't have that increment, we typically want to see those, those increments over a couple of years, period, before we actually go bond it. Because just, because somebody says a nice site plan, doesn't mean that's going to actually go vertical and get leased and get built, because it could have a value of zero. Georgetown, I think we've, you've probably all been through Georgetown and seen what it's done. Its downtown has been very successful. But they used it to really kind of do some pedestrian enhancements, mixed use, and they had a downtown vision. We find most downtowns throughout the state of Texas do have some sort of TIF involvement in them, because it's often a neglected area town where people are growing out to the suburbs. And they're using it as small as $5,000, you know, signs, you know, for historic street signs throughout the city. So, it can be as small or as large as, you know, a $10 million capital improvement. This is one of our clients, Salina, that I mentioned had over 20 TIFs. And we did a downtown TIF. And so, a downtown TIF is kind of difficult, because you know, and we did a downtown TIF for Stephenville as well. You know the area, and you know the vacant buildings, but then you have to know, are those developers interested in doing something? And then can we provide them a mechanism to be able to make that increment go forward? And so, in Salina, the TIF we put in place, we really didn't know at the time what was going to occur, but the community didn't have a central focal place, and it's a historic town. And so, they included $2.9 million in their bond program that uses a portion of the downtown square, adding patios, art, sculptures, murals. And the funding comes from bond money and tax increment reinvestment zone. The TERs portion was about $900,000. So, you can use them in a combination of you doing certificates of obligation, general obligation bonds, or just TERs. Because you, as Natalie said, you might have a cash balance in the TERs and say, hey, this is a worthwhile project, it meets the overall plan. So, how does this whole process work? We try to keep it simple, stupid, the KISS formula, if you will. Chapter 311 outlines the various procedures for creating and amending a TERs. You can call it a TIF if you want to, nobody's going to yell at you. There's a creation ordinance, there's two main documents, a creation ordinance and a project and financing plan. The creation ordinance establishes five key elements, and I think this is to attorney's point of, you have the boundary, the term, the city participation, the TERs board, and a preliminary project and financing plan. Now, it's preliminary, because the TIF board has to recommend approval of the final plan back to city council. That's the second ordinance. That second ordinance is the project and financing plan ordinance, and that's really your roadmap for how you plan on spending those dollars. We like to keep those not as flexible and amenable to market conditions as possible. We have found, I have found, over 30 years, if you make them too strict on how the money can be used, you're always going back and amending it, the project and financing plan. So, we put them in project categories, but we also put a cap in there. So, the city and the other taxing jurisdictions know what they're funding and what their cap is up to. But whether it's going to be, you know, 20% in water, 20% in roads, you know, 50% in sewer, you know, we let the two mother may-eyes determine that and bet that out. So, if you were to move forward with a TIF, if you created a TIF this year, or in 2025, if you created it by December 31st, and please don't call on December 31st and say, I want to create a TIF, because Natalie and I have done that many a times after Christmas, the day before, the day after Christmas, so they can set that base year at 2025. But that determines, you, you set the base for 2025. So, as you go through your tax year, 2026, which those revenues would be due in January 2027, you would already have built-in increment if there was a development that occurred. So, you determine the boundary for the zone. I think, Mayor, we had mentioned this before, it can be non-contiguous. We just did one in Bay City. Natalie, how many different zones did we have? She's doing one in Grand Prairie, and we finally had to, and we did one in Stephenville, to where they liked the original TIF, but then they wanted to continue to add on to it. And so, we would have another area over here, but they wanted to exclude some property here. And so, we got to TIF 1A, B, C, D, E, and I think we stopped at F. And Natalie said, no more. We have to move on to TIF number two. And we are now on TIF number three in Stephenville. But in Grand Prairie, for example, we have a TIF with 12 zones, 13 zones, and they're using that, an existing TIF that has money for both Johnson County and Ellis County, because they're, Grand Prairie's in both Dallas and Fort Worth, but they're ETJ. And they're using that as an incentive, because under, I think, what is it, Senate Bill 2303, it's where you can disannex from the ETJ. You don't have the, people can do that. And so, what we're providing, that is an inducement to come into the city and be a part of the city limits. So, it's voluntary annexation that they're providing, and for doing that, we're helping to pay for some of their roads. And so, with that, we're happy to answer any questions and kind of do a tag team. But that's a lot of information that we threw out there, but I think it gives you a flavor of what a TIF does. I, I go back to 50% of something is better than 100% of nothing, but we really have to do the homework to make sure. Somebody, I, I sent Shawna an article that in La Grange, they go, well, why wouldn't you do a TIF? And I said, well, development's going to occur anyway. Well, you probably wouldn't want to put a TIF in place unless you're like the city of Van Alstine. They knew development was going to occur on 75, but they didn't want to neglect their downtown. And so, instead of going through the budgeting process every year, they created a TIF along 75 and took that money, and it's being invested in the older part of town. And so, it establishes that fund for a period of, what, 25 years? And so, it's, there are unique ways, and so, you can get as creative as you like, but I'll just shut up at this point and answer your question. So, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, David. Any questions from the council? Our attorney?
In terms of amending the TERs, you were talking about boundaries, can you change the boundaries of the TERs later on?
Yes. And the only issue that you have with that is that you have to notice it, just like you did with the creation. So, it requires a one-week notice in the paper of the Meets and Bounds. But you also have a different base year. So, where Natalie's pulling her hair out, is when we have 13 of these, and you have 13 different base years, and they say, oh, we want to expand this many, you can imagine that you have 13 different base years. So, if you had TERs 1 in 2025, and you wanted to create what we would call TERs 1A in 2027, it would just have two base years. So, you're doing two calculations. But then you multiply that times 13, it gets a little crazy. So, but yes, it just creates a new base for when you're establishing that. So, and that becomes part of the interlocals as well. They're not participating from those original years.
So, a reason that you might choose to do that, whenever I am advising our clients as to how to consider the boundaries, I always think about areas in which you might collect increment, and also where, in which you may disperse the revenue. increment, and also, in which you may disperse the revenue. And so, it's looking at not only areas that will create increment, but also where areas of need. And so, if, for example, you had a mature TIF that had a fund, and maybe there wasn't any activity within the existing boundaries, and then a developer came in a separate area and said, I would like to do this project, but I need some assistance, you could potentially expand the existing TIF to encompass that new area, and then use the money from the fund of the existing TIF to kind of kickstart the incentive for the new area. So, there's a lot of reasons that you might want to expand the TIF. You can also decrease the size of the TIF if you'd like.
I would like to point out, if I could, that they, their services are not just in creating TIFs and TERs, but also, if there's an issue or maybe education that's needed in managing them, they also provide that as well to your finance directors.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, you have a question?
Who would manage the TERs? City administration?
The finance director, and if you hired their services, they would assist.
I think, and that's kind of one thing I wanted to make sure is clear, that just because you create the TIF, you're under no obligation to fund the developer's needs in any way. So, anytime that a developer or a city would want to come and receive some of the TIF funds, as David mentioned, they would have to go through the request process. So, they would have to go first to the TIF Board and then to City Council. You're under no obligation, and you don't receive TIF funds by right, just by developing within the boundaries.
Natalie, it's great to point that out, because a lot of people, developers will approach us, and they say, I'm in this TIF, I want everything paid for. And it is not an entitlement. There's a process that you have to go through, and you have to meet that test of the but-for. Are we increasing the quality? Would this project occur without it? All those different things that we kind of discussed are things that we kind of try to negotiate within our development agreements to make sure. But, a lot of times, people go, I'm in a TIF, so I'm entitled for all my public infrastructure to be paid for. No, 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 no. The idea, the ideal situation is, they build, they create increment, so you can put it into a project that is one of your priorities. So, it's not an entitlement, I think is the key.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. So, if a developer, as the mayor mentioned previously, decides to withdraw, and then he's already, he or she is already invested, would they be able to get back some of what they, to recoup some of that investment?
My answer would be no. It depends on the legal documents drawn up, but the legal documents that we recommend, we start out with a pretty simple term sheet, the keep simple stupid, you know, philosophy was, you build it by this date, and you get a CO by this date. If you didn't complete that, that's an event of default, we owe you nothing. And so, if they built half of what they are supposed to build, and they said they're gonna build 400 apartment units, and they built 100, that's a default. You owe them nothing per the TIF, and that money just continues to go into the TIF.
Good, that's good. And another thing is, this is also helpful to the developers and the city, because it's being based on projected property tax valuations, increases. But, we know the legislature at this time is considering property tax relief, or trying to cap our property taxes, or the amount that a city or municipality, or any of the taxing entities can collect. How would that affect the TERs?
You bring up a nuance to the TIF that I'm happy to explain. Under SB 2 and SB 3, cities and ISDs are capped at, cities in particular are capped at 3.5% growth cap. So, you know your no new effective tax rate. So, you take your total taxable value, less new construction, that's the amount that you can grow your tax rate without calling it an election. What goes into a TIF is subtracted from that number, so it's excluded from that 3.5% calculation.
Thank you for the clarification. The other thing is, Pierce, you have a lot of experience in this, and that's very good. However, what cons have you associated with a TERs, that you've come across some problems?
I'm gonna let Natalie administer all the-
Even if you've been able to resolve them, I'd like to have some examples.
No, 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 that's a very fair question, and I want Natalie to first take a stab at it, and then I'd be happy to-
Who's the one that gives you the bad view?
No, no, no.
The only thing I would kind of think about is maybe not having the staff in place on your team, and kind of overloading, you know, as you have too much administration. That would only really occur if you had quite a few TIFs and a very active TIF, so it's kind of a good problem to have. The worst thing, I think, is having a stagnant TIF. What David and I have seen at times is like a, if you build it, they will come mentality, and that's not necessarily really the case. You know, I will say that I do like the way that TIFs signal to developers the areas in which you are wanting them to target investment. That definitely will bring them to the table, but that doesn't necessarily get them all the way across the finish line. So, one thing I've seen, you know, as a TIF, is that sometimes cities will put it in place, and then they don't necessarily know how to activate it. So, I think, in my experience, it's either too active, and you're overloading. I do want to say that the administration of the TIF is reimbursable by the TIF. So, when I worked for the city of Fort Worth, what I would do is, I was in the Economic Development Department, and part of my responsibilities included administering a TIF. I would just count, track my hours, and then they would take a portion of my salary and reimburse that portion of my salary from the TIF funds. So, it's not necessarily going to eat into the city budget.
I would say that probably the biggest, on the surface, con would be, would a project move forward without the TIF participation? And that's part of rolling up your sleeves and getting into it. And it's kind of a game of chicken. We're not moving forward unless you help us reimburse this $3 million worth of sanitary sewer. And you say, nope, I've seen it 1,000 times where the city just walks away, and no development. I have not seen very often, I think maybe once or twice in my 30-year career, to where a developer was told no by a city, we're not giving you an investment, and they went forward with the project anyway. That's the worst-case scenario. You're funding a project that, and you want to look out for taxpayer dollars. So, if the project's gonna happen, we have to ask, anyway, why are we doing it? If it's gonna happen anyway, we might be increasing its velocity. But, also in these agreements, we also can put in some design standards, because it's a contract. So, it's almost you're getting into zoning and saying, okay, I want all of this to be masonry. You can't do, you know, just stick builds. I want to have, I've even seen it to where it says, you have to have a grocery store as a component of this. Now, the market will, you know, vet out whether that's possible or not, but anything is possible to put in there as a requirement from the public sector in order to get these funds. Natalie, you've seen those requirements put in there as well.
And the last question I have is, aside from local developers that might be interested in participating in a TERs, do y'all maintain, does your business maintain a list of potential developers that are interested in going into communities such as ours?
Absolutely. So, we have-
So, in other words, you would help recruit a developer?
And I think that you have some, a partner. We work a lot with Retail Strategies, Retail Coach, those that will be in Vegas next week talking about tenants. And so, we're all part of the ecosystem. They're securing the tenants, but they need buildings. So, then, we're working with the developers, because they have to be able to build, but the developer gets this OPC that says, I can't build this space, I got this LOI. So, that's where we all kind of come together. But, we do have a number of different developers, particularly on the larger scale front, because we work with well-heeled private developers, not just Natalie and David put an LLC together, and we think we're gonna build a big shopping center and have zero experience doing it. We try to work with those that have experience and have a track record, because if they don't perform on this project, it's gonna come and bite them on their next project that they come forward and work with the city. Because you typically want to do something with somebody that's had a track record. Everybody's gotta cut their first deal, but has a track record of working in transparent manners and with a public-private, you know, relationship.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, everyone, I thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
This time it's 6:29, meeting is adjourned for the city and the EDC.
6:29, where are you going? We have one busy. Hello, Mr. JP.